Got it. All right, microphone's on, guys.
Okay, I have to call this meeting of the Hampton Board Selectmen to order. October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, Don. This board is being conducted in person and remotely. We're recording the meeting. Is anybody else recording the meeting? Seeing none less proceed. We have ministry view of September nineteenth. For summary of the meeting, we were notified of a rush truck rant being awarded to us. Update on dispatch. Town clerk came in and spoke about early voting. We had a update on our audit, which was very favorable. We reviewed special town meeting articles. Close the warrant.
Motion to approve September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We do have executive session minutes, which will not be discussed, but just a quick review for approval.
Motion to approve September nineteenth executive session.
I'd like to hold off on these. Directions I'd like to make.
Okay. Do you want to discuss those with the chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, what's wrong?
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. The town has an ambulance advisory committee, and it's extremely important what it does. Especially as we are currently in the third year of the contract, and we have seen some some issues going on with the town, providing that they are working very hard to overcome in cooperation with their town. However, we reached out to Jim Smith, who made the mistake of contacting us and showing up at meetings. And Jim has a long, long history of service to the town. Former selectman, ConCon member one time, right, Jim? Also? And advisory. Back again. That line from, what's the line from The Godfather? I thought it was out, but they direct pulled me back in. So.
As a part of my heritage, being Italian, I don't respond to Godfather comments.
So noted for the record. Pam, put that in a minute. So, Jim, are you interested in being on the ambulance advisory committee? Right. You want to say anything about it? Be quizzed or just?
Oh, no, see now.
It's not a lot of time, but I'm just saying. And also having served with Jim on the board, I think his background, both from a municipal standpoint, understands sometimes the complexities of dealing with everything together. Sometimes it's not as easy as coming up with a quick answer. There's a hundred hundred and fifty master general laws that may apply to this as well. So I would appreciate Jim's insight for that. I would ask the board for a positive response to his request.
I move, I move the appoint Jim to the ambulance, give him Smith, the ambulance advisory committee, oversight committee.
All those in favor?
Welcome, Jim.
Six o'clock, probably downstairs. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Still making home for supper. All right, the Heart Springs Foundation fundraiser at the Senior Center, and I'm thinking that you all, sure. Pam, do you want to flip those on for them, please?
Also, Becky is now on Zoom as well.
You're gonna have a lot to say.
Oh, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a little bit of an introduction.
Claudia.
For those who don't, I know you all know us. Fatty Capino's Greenleaf Drive have
Joan Shay Greenleaf Drive.
Yep. Laurie, Dan, I'm Card Springs Foundation. So I am president of the Friends of Hampden Seniors. Joan is my vice president. We have a wonderful board who aren't here tonight, but maybe they're listening. First of all, I want to thank all four of you for buying apple pies for our fundraisers. Because as you know, we are working very hard to try to earn some money for the Senior Center. Laurie is with us tonight. Joan and I met with her a couple of weeks ago, and we actually have a little connection to Heart Springs in town. I don't know if any of you know David Betern, who grew up in Hampden, a neighbor of ours, a Greenleaf Drive young man. He is the director of the Hampden County Big Brothers Big Sisters. So Joan actually reached out to David first because we weren't, she had some ideas, and David sent us in the right direction, and that's how we met Laurie. So we had a nice meeting with her, and then Joan and I met with Becky, and Becky sounded excited about it, and hopefully it's something that you will approve. Anything you want to add, Joan?
This fundraiser would, and I thought about it because there was a way that I heard we could earn money by donations to Heart Springs, and it would come back to us, to the fundraisers that we're doing for the Senior Center. And through David Betern, we reached out to Laurie, met with her, and she has the program that explains how we can earn money through Heart Springs. And if Laurie can explain that.
That'd be good, because I don't know what Heart Spring is. I don't know what Heart Spring is.
Heart Springs is the donations of the clothing items that you, they might phone you and say, we're going to be in your area. If you have a bag of clothes or small items, put them out at the curb, we'll pick them up. Let us know. And it's a part of Big Brothers, and, and that's how, that's where Laurie is. She's marketing director there.
Now that Don's retired for the fourth time, he has many suits he'd like to wear, so.
Well, don't give them away.
Don't give them away, yeah. We have a plan.
So it's good to explain. You did an excellent job. Yeah, so Heart Springs, we take donations of more than clothing. Clothing, textiles, linens, handbags, shoes, housewares, toys, sporting equipment. So just about a little bit of everything. And the way that our organization works is that we have a couple of different layers of how we collect these items. One of them being is we have our residential delivery drivers. Frequently people will see our sixteen-foot box truck driving around your neighborhood with our, with our big purple logo on it, and we do pre-scheduled pickups. Another thing that we do is we have a lot of community partnership opportunities, one of which is a building truck. So we'll do those a lot of the time with schools. We pay for, we do a per pound profit share with them at ten cents per pound, and then, you know, they walk away at the end of that after we've laid up with a check. So though, that isn't a very sustainable way of fundraising. So when I was speaking with Claudia and Joan, we were really looking for a sustainable method of fundraising for the Senior Center. And so we came into the discussion about our bins. Our bins are six foot by six foot by four foot, and we have a huge service program for them. So I know that a lot of people, when they see those large metal bags, they have a lot of things there, and without, are they going to stay clean? We really put our brand behind our bins, and when I say that, we have developed a way to ensure that we are going to make sure we're going to service those things with our huge system. So the way that works is that if, say, it snows outside and you need the bin cleared up, we will actually come out and do that for you. We pay a lesser rate. We pay seven cents per pound for cloth items. If there's trash around the bin, we will actually come out and clear the trash, and we charge, we will pay eight cents per pound for that, if there's no snow removal. Our full tier service without any snow removal or garbage removal is ten cents per pound, which is actually the highest rate of any of our competitors. Our average bin will do about two hundred dollars just, just in clothing donations. It's pretty amazing, and it's a very creative way for the Senior Center to come up with, you know, come up with funding and also really support the community, because with our partnership through Savers, we provide all of the clothing to them. We don't sort it or anything like that. One common misconception about our organization is that since we fund Big Brothers, we give the clothing directly to them. That isn't how it works at all. We actually provide that material to Savers, and they pay us, and we provide all of the revenue out to Big Brothers Big Sisters to finance our profit share. Any questions before I keep talking?
I do have questions, but I'll let you keep going first.
Um, so.
Well, I, I'm in town. If a bin were there, and as Laurie explained, anytime it needs to be emptied, if we find it full, all I have to do is call her direct, she'll send a truck right out.
So that was one of my questions, is how often do you come? So is it?
Whenever I call Laurie.
So we That's okay. So we will provide an initial memorandum of agreement with the Senior Center, stating that we will provide service on a, on a, on a frequented basis, whether it be weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly. I think what we had discussed in our conversation was bi-weekly, twice monthly, to come down and service the bin. However, it is in our memorandum of agreement that if they give a, you're given twenty-four hours notice, we will come down and service that.
At no charge or no reduced rate? So it's still at the ten cents?
It would be the reduced rate if you called us and said, we need you to come shovel it out as well, so we
I was just curious. So say, say the bin gets full in a week, and you're in a bi-legal schedule, and you want to, they want to say, hey, you know, we got a full bin, come pick it up. They're still going to get ten cents a pound, but we know, no charges on top of that. They come back again a week later.
We will be overjoyed. We want those ill events to fill up. We want to help the community reduce their rates, and we want to help the Senior Center. So if they call us every week, they call us every day, we'll be there.
So you Picture what the bin looks like, and
We'll have a key also. So we can go in and check, or Becky can check and see if it's getting close. Give them a call and
Now, what about larger items? You said you take toys and
He has a lot of toys.
I do, I do. So I'm like, I can fill that up with toys.
So we will pay, with the exception of large appliances and climate care.
How does that work, though, with a bin?
That being said, it has to fit in the bin.
Okay.
So if you find somebody who wanted to make a larger donation, they can reach out to us directly, and we will come and
And now they'll still get the credit?
If they let us.
Okay.
They say, oh, we can't get it in the bin.
That's great. Oh, yeah.
Just to make sure, you know, the nurse is not going to get stuff, yeah.
But we don't take large furniture at all.
She said they're brand new, brand new.
Or any kind of large appliances, so no stoves, no refrigerators, stuff like that.
Right, I was just thinking, you know, toys can fill up quick, and people are just going to maybe put them on the outside. So, I mean, I don't know if you, Becky's got a key, maybe just put them inside, I guess, and
And Becky has mentioned and has been out there with us, and we had a meeting at, at the Senior Center with Laurie. She picked out a place on the Senior Center property nearest Allen Street at that end. Now, I know buses when they come in for trips, and there's going to be one Wednesday, so I'm going to watch. We're going to be on that bus trip. I need to know when that bus comes in and out and around, how much room it needs, and exactly where it can be. I'll, I'll watch, you know, in that.
So on the grass or on the, in the parking lot area?
Parking lot. It's what Becky, I think Becky said.
So the bin would need to be placed on pavement. Placing it on grass will rust.
And it's tough to kind of clear it if it snows.
Um.
The good thing is, it's also, you're seeing the front part by Allen Street, so very visible for the police as they go by, and they're also monitoring.
And it's right under white lights.
Well, that was my question. I know Becky's on right now. Does the, does the Senior Center have cameras?
They do not.
So we'd be able to monitor it for vandalism or anything like that.
They do not. But we go by, I'm, we're
Sure. It's right next to the police station.
Right, right. We said that, yeah.
And if there is any vandalism or dumping, please give us a call. We want to know about, and we want to be this bin, and we want this to be a representation of our organization.
So was there any time here, you know, I mean, is this a one-year, two-year, three-year thing?
Well, so we were having a discussion about, you know, this doesn't have to be a long-term thing. We can try it out. We can do three months and see how three months works for the Senior Center, and if that works, the bin is already there, we just leave it. So we write up the memorandum of agreement, and we continue on.
Is the memorandum of agreement with us, with the Senior Center, with the Friends?
Actually, I left it on the table over there, and I
Yeah, Becky has it.
Becky has it.
I actually brought a copy of it, but I'm really sorry. This is what our standard bin memorandum of agreement looks like. And I hope, hopefully that will also help with any, any question.
So typically, who would you have that agree with? That's kind of my question.
We would have that agreement with the seniors.
So Becky's on the hook for it.
And if at the end of three months it doesn't work out, we will have no problem coming to take the bin away. Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea. Anyway, to raise money.
When recently I sold my parents' home and had two deaths in my family, and had to get rid of a lot of clothes, a lot of good clothes, and it was a struggle finding somewhere that wasn't dumping looking. You know, I, we had suits, we had coats, we had beautiful things. I drove around, and the best one I found was in Wolverham.
There is no bin anywhere now.
Well, there's something at Bethlehem, but I think it's a different kind of There's something there.
That, that bin has been removed from Bethlehem.
It's been removed.
There was one at the school. I don't remember if it's still there or not.
What did you say, Becky?
The Bethlehem bin has been removed.
Oh, okay.
Do you know why they're removed?
I do not.
I, I went one time to leave some things, and there was so much
I would suggest that you're so, that people are so disrespectful. They throw everything in there and just around the bin and everything else, and that's, that's
It wasn't monitored properly.
We had a real concern, you know.
And that was also in the back, too, though.
Transfer station. Haven't got it removed because it was all just, you know, trash.
We can address that. I wanted the transfer station. I don't know if you want to bring that up.
Oh, so I, okay. So, yeah, we did have a bin, I believe, at the Hampden Transfer Station at one point. We did have, and I, I am going to be very honest with you before I speak about this, because I'm talking about it from the third person. I wasn't there. I was not working for Heart Springs at the time. But how it was explained to me by our operations manager was that we had a bin, and it's actually one of the reasons for our tiered service now. The bin was damaged by the snowplow at the transfer station, and it caused the bin to freeze to the ground, and so it created a real challenge for the town, created a challenge for us trying to get it out of there. As far as I know, this was several years ago, pre-COVID, and we definitely don't want something like that to happen again. And it's, you know, our property is your town. We don't want a situation like that to happen. And I think that having it at the Senior Center instead of something like the transfer station is going to reduce the amount of dumping. It's on a main road. The area that the ladies have selected is right under a street light, so it's going to be very well lit. And there are, the senior, the Senior Center has people at it frequently enough that if they see any form of dumping, I am sure I'm going to care about it.
And we would deal directly with Laurie. She's our contact person, so it's not like we're going to call someone we don't know.
And so how often is, does the financial part work out?
So we remit payment quarterly, and that goes quarterly by the year schedule.
Okay.
So our next one would be, of course, in December, and then again in March.
Okay. I think Craig, you brought up a bit of a point. I think that's something the board needs to explore, security over there. We probably should touch with Tony and see if there is an opportunity for cameras to be installed. I don't know if Becky has a, a comment on that, but I don't think it's a, it's a bad thing. And it also gets back into safety. I mean, you have people elderly, you know, traversing the parking lot, and it'd be nice to see, you know, how it's going out there and stuff like that if somebody ran into a problem. So that might be something for security down the road as well. So I take it, Becky, you're in favor of this?
Yes, it's a very easy fundraiser. So, yes.
Okay. Not as easy, not as easy as the pies, but it's right up, it's right up.
You don't know.
Not as delicious as pie.
You might be baking those pies, John. You never know. We might be baking those pies.
Really?
If, no, no, it's all right.
I'm excited to get my pie.
I know. I saw your names on the list, so thank you very much. We're, we're working hard. It's, it's not going as well as I thought it would. So if anybody is on, I know, I'm not pointing things, I'm just saying, anybody on the Zoom meeting?
I have two suggestions to that. You know, maybe we could set up a robocall to help fund or promote the, the, well, one, the bin, but two, maybe, maybe we could do something with the pies, too, with a robocall. I'd be like, hey, we're trying to fund the Senior Center.
Maybe in the future. I think right now our cutoff date is the end of this week.
For the pies, okay, so that's out.
That's not a bad idea.
And Laurie has ideas in how she advertises as a part of Heart Spring.
So we would want to place the bin location in our brochure. We have a list of all of our bin locations, and that would be on its next printing, which would probably be in about a month because we're running out.
Okay.
Um, we also will be pushing it out on social media to let people in your community know that the bin is there, and I can have a conversation with David Carden, our operations manager. It would definitely be not a turn-up for us to be able to advertise it. To do a mail-out.
At no cost.
It would be all our
Okay.
All right, then, going forward in terms of some of the textile law.
Yeah.
Going forward, then, I'll be looking for the board to, obviously, Becky, they're asking for you to sign off on this. Are you comfortable with doing that?
I am. I just wanted your approval because it is town property, and that's, that's above my pay grade.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Make a motion, authorize the Senior Center Director to enter into memorandum of agreement with Hart Spring. In favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Becky. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
And again, when you guys get the bin, have somebody reach out to Bob, maybe do a robocall, just to kind of let people know that's there.
You know, one of the questions I just saw there from Master Clavitt. You might, the textile.
The textile.
Yes, so as of November first, it will be unlawful to dispose of clothing and other textiles in your regular trash. They, they need to be disposed of in a more environmentally friendly manner.
So you're expecting an uptick in business, basically?
We are, and that's another reason we're trying to get bins out in locations, because once people, we recently put a a buzz out on Facebook about this, and it is surprising how many people are unaware of this new, this new rule coming out.
I'm sure.
But people will be aware of that, and then they're going to be looking for a place to dispose it. It is a perfect opportunity for them to have a passion and fundraise.
Thank you very much.
Is anybody, actually, do you all have private haulers for your trash? I mean, have you heard something from Casella or McNamara, any people you use, have they?
I don't.
I, I have private.
Right. Have they said anything to the customers?
No, I haven't gotten anything.
That's surprising. You'd think they would have.
I'm amazed.
Not that I know of. I don't, I got a bill, and I
It could be on their website, so too, and they might not be just
But I, see, I wouldn't throw clothes into that.
You don't think that?
I would, for some way to get rid of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good
You may be aware, there's something that I think we need to discuss. We have Shelley here. I wonder if we could indulge Bob with the commiserate report right now prior to our financial discussion.
All right. Work is finished on this special town meeting motions.
Shelley, go to where the mic is.
All right, pull my
Shelley's here. And there's a question. When does the board want to, want to discuss the establishment of a municipal light plant board of directors? Your decision would be either an outside group or the selectmen. So you want to have this on the agenda sooner or later?
We, we discussed having the fiber optic committee take that role.
Yeah, that's, that's what I put on there. The fiber optic committee reviews that at the last meeting.
We didn't vote on it. It was just, I think that was, we'd have to appoint at that point, in that manner.
So the question also, there's another question brought up. How's the board feeling about October thirty-first being a pass? We're going to be down, down one man.
We have some executive sessions that are pending.
All right, let's tentatively call Tuesday, depending on need.
So Tuesday.
November first, right. Because I think we want to recap town meeting rather than let it go too long. Right, bring whatever candy you have.
Okay, you're aware that we did submit a grant for a document management program, and then we have Shelley and the report on Bibo Dog.
Yeah, Saturday morning about nine thirty-eight. Marina Severino from one eighty-five Raymond Drive texted me and sent me two videos of, from her Ring camera, on Lindsay's big black dog in the backyard, and then in her driveway around her her cars. She was very nervous because she was at the airport, and her kids were home, her two-year-old and her other kids, and her husband, but she was very nervous because she's, you know, scared of that dog. So I called Lindsay, and she said that she had called the kids, and the kids said he was in the driveway, and they got him in. They, they had let him out.
They had let him out the front, not the back.
Yeah. Or the breezeway, I guess.
So Shelley, last time when we had Ms. Bebo in, we put her on notice that this was not going to be acceptable.
And this is like the third time since.
Right. Obviously, they had the, the fence problem. You looked at it, you said the fence is repaired to
Yeah.
Some kind of standard. Surely nothing you would say, not like AC went out there and built a new fence, right? They blocked up a hole, basically.
Yep.
Does sound like there's not really been a lot of effort to protect the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Cooperation as well. And all, Don, you were kind of leading on that last time. What's your thoughts?
Oh, I think we need to have them come back in, and we need to to do a couple of stronger resolutions. But there's no other choice, and we can't have them, you know, three times that's happened, right?
And this isn't, this isn't the Yorkshire Terrier Beagle, you know, wandering down the road here. This is something that would, the neighbor is quite understandably fearful of what goes on here, especially the children.
The acts of reference.
Right. Now, there was no no active aggression, so to speak. Nobody was attacked, per se. It's a fearful situation.
With Don, we gotta have him back in, continue the hearing, and come up with a resolution.
Okay. So it really does lend rather than let it go too long. Okay, so it really does lend, rather than let it go too long, I think that speaks to why we should have November first. So Pam, Bob then, could you?
Let it go to November one as opposed to.
Bring them in for November one.
Next week's the panel meeting.
Okay, any other situations, the other people we've been discussing any issues there? Any other, animal, goats?
We're wrong last night, they were. One of them got, was, you saw one by our shed last night.
Did you?
A bear?
Yep.
Great parent, just put through a bylaw.
Well, bears prohibiting, prohibiting residents, prohibiting residents from
placing food stuff in a way that bears could discover it and get into it. So it has to do with handling of food wastes.
Oh, next one will be bird feed, isn't it, bird feed is also.
Bird feed is a big attraction.
Thank you for coming in. Alright, hopefully we'll see a resolution to this.
My next item is Senator Lesser.
It's, you handwrote ten fifteen, but it was a different date, was that just an error?
Yeah, it was just an error, yeah.
Senator Lesser is making a final round to communities that he serves. And you've probably seen in the email traffic, we finally agreed on November the twenty first. Have him here first and have some things to say. We also have a request from Tina Duran, sorry. To establish a four-way stop at Wilbraham East Long Meadow and Summers Roads. I said I would bring that to the selectmen. The sidewalks and safety signals, you're aware, at the Centennial Commons and there's more work to be done there. But one of the issues we have to resolve in the near future is what to do with the fifty-three thousand oh eighty-one remaining from the gaming commission grant of a hundred thousand.
Is it that much? How much was this, this installation?
This is going to be twenty-four. And we had a twenty-two thousand dollar change cost for that digital radar sign.
You know, if this is a, a good thing and we are redoing part of Main Street, we might want to consider one at the entrance to the park. No, no.
I mean, on. Yeah, I agree with that.
Or here at the thing, but I think the park, yeah. It's on the main.
On the main route. It gets really busy here, you know, during the elections, but and then.
And we could schedule it to be installed same time they're doing the sidewalk anyhow. There will really be no additional cost for sidewalk.
So this, this would be across Main Street at.
What they think about it.
I think that's a good idea.
All right, Craig, you want to bring that to the park board next time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you did see the message that I sent over on Community Solar. Have any interest in that, we'll put it back on the agenda after you have a chance to read the material. Now, our town council has received some messages from that private group in Boston. Basically asking the town to put additional software on the town's website that would facilitate use by those with the handicaps. I've talked with our website provider and they now have two programs. One is the one that they've always provided, around twenty-six hundred dollars. Now they have a new one, which is a bit of an upgrade, so. Looking for the board to agree that we would go forward with this.
Do you see other towns being so speak ADA compliant on their websites? Then it's just even without the, so not pseudo mandate from the state, it's the right thing to do for our town. If there's a way we can find the money, maybe under our.
I did send a message with Rose that this is unbudgeted and that do they have any funds available for this? I tend to doubt that they do, so. Say curiosity, what does the software on Sunset Cross do to make ADA compliant? I don't know, but they're going to send me, they're going to send me demonstrations of two products that they have. I haven't seen it myself.
Or a couple other towns that are currently using.
I just want to see what it is before we agree to it.
Oh, yeah.
But it's worth exploring, no question.
Also, the addition that you requested from tie and bond to add on to the study at town hall, I have here, just to need your a vote to sign it.
How much they want for it?
Seven and change, seven thousand.
And this adds hazardous?
Yes, correct.
You know, maybe stuck with a, we don't find out that it's justice or something beforehand, we can come back and bite you later.
White gold.
So I guess authorize the town administrator to sign the.
You know, some of.
Well, you're on the hook for a bob.
You're right, thank you. I did send you the national grid report, shared conservation agent, I have some disappointing information. Town of Munson, you know, decided to back out. And just this morning, the town of Long Meadow decided that they were going to go in a different direction. They're going to hire a thirty-hour tree warden. And apparently there's a near crisis, I remember the town manager saying that they think they have a near crisis with damaged trees on or near the public way and posing a safety hazard. They're going to use the funds that they have available to hire a thirty-hour tree warden. And then they make that person a ten-hour conservation agent. I don't know about that combination.
No, that, that mix of hours seems very odd.
That's what they're going to be attempting to do. In the meantime, we have an interest now from Lovebuck as of today in doing something in common, a shared service in combination with the town. So we're going to explore that tomorrow.
I remember seeing an email from you about something interesting.
Yes, that has changed also, that was a person in Munson who they were willing to share, but they've also taken up, they've also changed the, the job description to provide additional hours for that person and they have none to share. So this has become a bit frustrating, but I think it's important to provide that kind of expertise to our conservation commission and so we'll just keep at it. My work for the coming week will be preparing requests for proposals for the windows project here as well as for the Main Street sidewalk project. I don't know when the state is going to release the money. But because both of these projects exceed fifty thousand dollars, we have to have advertised bids, so I'm going to prepare the advertised bids. And maybe not post them right away, trying to get some information on when the, the money's going to become available, but eventually put that on the central register and on COMBIES and see who wants to do the project.
Yeah, quickly, one thing before Bob puts that out, I'd like to bring this to the board that I know Bob put out the spec to get the bond thing for a new cement highway on the south side of Main Street. I'd like to expand that before we put it out because I don't think it's fair that people on north side don't get a new sidewalk. It wouldn't extend, I mean, it's only the current thing pretty much from the town hall to Memorial Park pretty much, right? And I think the RFQ should include both. You know, let's see what it comes out.
I think we'll have enough money to do that.
I mean, just because Craig and I live on the north side of Main Street, I don't think it's fair that.
I don't mind walking across the sidewalk if we got lights.
Well, if we get that crosswalk, exactly, sure. Don doesn't care, he has no sidewalk at all.
He just rides his bike. That's the report.
I do.
That's my report. Thanks, Bob.
Alright, thank you for the update. And so we have Kelly. Oh no, quickly, the handbook change health insurance, sorry.
And explain where we are with that.
Yeah, turn your mic on.
Put something in your folder that I redlined to show you new language, the language that was there. Nothing in there, too? Second, no?
No, there's nothing in the folders, it's just on the agenda. On the back.
Oh, it's on the backside of the agenda, that's right. Um, the, the language regarding retiree insurance states something to the effect of, you can make changes, all your changes at open enrollment. Well, you can, you can make changes then, but those qualified events, you get married, you get divorced, you have a child. They are, they can be made outside of open enrollment and that was not stated correctly in the handbook. So if you want to use that language or change it, whatever, but and, and it, it gives thirty-day window for people to notify me, okay, we're making a change, we had a baby, we're going to add the baby. So, just to clarify.
We always want to clarify that qualifying event, in our opinion, retirement is one of them as well.
Exactly, and I did speak with our people about that.
You can't force them to retire at open enrollment, right? Second.
Or revise the handle.
Right, yes, okay. Hi Kelly, now it's all you. You want to quickly just unmute and give us an update, there was a conversation about during the staff meeting about an issue with the solar project.
Hello, how are you? Hi, yes, thank you. I had reached out to Bob initially and he had put it on the agenda for our last department meeting. I just wanted to bring up, I had a, a little issue getting some information needed from one of the solar companies. And this was rare, it generally does not happen. But it just made me think that it would be beneficial to get a better process in place, just to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I ended up getting the information that was needed and I did have, I did have some numbers to work with. But I had requested some additional information just to verify everything, which I have since received. But my thought was that we could prevent this by just having a better process and maybe when the developer first contacts us, we can have a working group. We could all sit down with them, find out what the plans are and then go over what each department needs. And maybe provide them with a checklist, so that way they have it and they can go through and make sure everything's in place prior to completing the project and looking for a CO.
Okay, so is somebody going to be working on developing that checklist, you're working on it in coordination with Wendell, et cetera?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week, bring the working group. Working group together, come up with checklist and a better process.
Sound good.
Thank you, Bob.
Which, which, which project was it, Kelly?
It was for the newest one on Mill Road, Park Ave Solar. And it, what happened was, there was actually a transition within the company, so the person that we had been dealing with for quite some time, for years, actually no longer works there. And he had given me a new contact and I, I ended up getting another contact from there, so in the end, it kind of kept getting passed and I kept letting them know that it was pretty crucial that they got the information to me. But actually Pam helped and sent an email as well. And they clarified who the new contacts are, who we'll be working with and promised that wouldn't happen moving forward.
Now, we don't have a pilot with them, right, this, this is all personal property taxes?
Correct.
So will this, will this affect prior evaluations, like will there be an opportunity that we would have to go back and collect from prior years or?
No, it's actually taxable for fiscal twenty-three for the first.
Just now, first time, okay.
Yes, and they had talked about doing a pilot agreement initially and then they decided just to not have an agreement. Which worked fine.
Are there any, that's a good question, are there any outstanding pilot agreements that we haven't completed yet? I know there were a couple of projects, I think the Russia Road, but that never happened.
That never happened, so Borrego Solar, that was never executed. We had prepared that and then there was an issue with conservation. And I have not heard from them, from them since, but I know that they are getting to the later stages, so I'm reaching out to them so that we can get that finalized.
So they haven't said they don't want to do it, this one we're authorized to explore one.
Correct, yep, it's all been authorized, to my knowledge, they have continued to say that they would like to enter into an agreement. They were just waiting until they could get everything moving along.
And Ames Road?
Ames Road is done, that became taxable for fiscal twenty-two, so this will be our second year collecting for that project. The Amoresco one, the pilot was fully executed, but it was not completed to come on the books for fiscal twenty-three. It will likely be fiscal twenty-four.
Just quick, Ted, so Borrego's coming along, you guys are still.
They're, well, that's pretty much in the P T hands, but they're well along, British done, both hands. Most of the equipment's in, I hadn't been up there in some time, I don't know exactly where it's standing other than it's well along.
It's no red flags, just going through their process. Okay, thank you. Alright, so thank you for the update, Kelly. Prior to going into the special time, I thought it'd be best if we all got together, so we had a game plan to give to advisory our thoughts, where we stand with our free cash. Cliff has come to the town and said, here's a boatload of money, what do you want to do with it? Thank you, Cliff. So the selectmen, in our wisdom, as it is, have come up with a list of articles, some to spend money. None to appropriate other than from the free cash. And then we have some questions on sums at the end. So, before we get there, Kelly, are you still on? So give us a quick recap of the, where we stand tax rate wise and tax bill wise as well.
So right now, we are still in the, we're still in the preliminary stages, we have not set the values at this point. We're still working on that process, it will be completed by the end of November. So we'll have more information on that at the tax classification hearing. I did provide an estimate of new growth, which was about twelve point nine million. Twelve point nine, double check that, yep, twelve point nine million. So about nine, approximately nine and a half million of that was in personal property growth. A lot of that had to do with our public utilities. And the one solar, the one on Mill Road, which is new for this year. And because they did not enter into a tax agreement, we did get the new growth from that.
So a pretty sizable number.
It is.
Yeah.
Absolutely, especially for a town our size.
Alright, so with that and with what we passed the town meeting. Did you have any kind of number for a, a tax rate?
So we did, so you know, Dick and I actually had some discussions earlier and I'm not sure, Dick, if you'd like me to refer to you on this. You don't have to, we were discussing it, so I just want to, you know, I provided the information that I had to come up with a accurate estimate.
Gave me a lot of numbers and many of them are estimates, again, they don't have an obligation to jump for over two bucks. But based on all fall town meeting spending being transferred rather than being raised appropriately without any action to reduce the tax rate. Total tax package for the town will likely be a little lower this year. We had a bizarre problem last year because residential values went up quite a bit, but personal properties did not. And personal properties, because of all the building business we do. It's a substantial portion of our tax base. So I was given a couple of confidential numbers with what an average house in the town of Hampton goes for. And if we take no action on reducing the tax rate, then. Then the average house, which was three hundred nine thousand dollars last year. And paid five, fifty-seven eighty-four, would likely pay fifty-eight thirty-seven. So forty dollar a year increase.
Very respectable.
We have a, if, if all these numbers are true. We're gonna have a ridiculously low tax rate, violations are going up, so sorry people, providing a similar property taxes. And a record um excess levy limit.
So Kelly, you did say that, you know, based on the fact that if you threw in the true new growth, et cetera. The tax rate would go down, but the bills, as Dick said, would pretty much stay with that rate, would stay fairly static.
Correct, yes.
The new growth is basically absorbing the increase in the budget.
Oh, part of it, yeah. So that just, again, goes back to your thoughts then on do we do a, everything in stabilization? Do we have whatever? Any kind of like, you know, gives you, you know, background for your, your thoughts and your decisions?
I was gonna say, that's the million dollar question, but it's really more like the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar question.
Sure.
We, we had some discussions about it. Um, and our thinking is. Uh, that it's probably prudent to take all of the excess free cash. And put that into stabilization. That's assuming that. All this federal state money will not remain available for much more than another couple of years. So essentially what we are looking at is kind of a three to five year timeframe. The day will come when the flow in stabilization is going to be going out instead of going again. Right now, we have the ability to put money into stabilization. So when those federal and state funds dry up, a few years out. Uh, we should be able to absorb that through stabilization, but use it for the purpose which is intended to, which is to. Absorb any, any shocks.
And I think also, we have, we are looking forward even to twenty-four. We have uh. Transfer station contract coming up, we have ambulance contract coming up, we have the whole inflation factor. We're certainly gonna pay more money for health benefits, we're gonna pay more money for Hamilton County Retirement. Um, you know?
List of things that are becoming less expensive is pretty short.
Yeah.
And we still have some new capital projects.
Yeah.
Dick has made a good point about that. Put it away now, because you could, say you paid. For another three million for a senior center expansion, you could knock a million dollars off that cost without damaging stabilization. And therefore not funding a huge debt thing going forward. It's a smart move. You have bridge projects that technically are coming up, where the town is gonna have to take some part of it as well. Bob is a great guy at grants, but he can't get all of it. I don't know why.
What percentage of our stabilization now is, or what was our percentage of stabilization created today?
You just ran, it was fourteen?
Fourteen percent? With, with this, with this money transferred to stabilization, it'd be below fourteen percent. Right now, I think stabilization's about one point six, which is almost ten percent of our budget. What was the minimum mandate? You said?
Eight, eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve?
Well, it's a recommendation.
Recommendation.
Yeah, um, you know, so, yeah, this might run us up, but again. The tides are gonna reverse. We were just saying that uh. Two thousand twenty-four is the twentieth anniversary of the Blood in the Streets year, because we weren't prepared. And given the way the federal government's going in inflation rates, two thousand twenty-four could be a really tough year.
Sure.
For two thousand twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Or, or both. Now, we, we had, we had some discussion about it, but I think it's fair to say that. You know, after each of us had expressed our opinions, we essentially came up with, you know, the, the same opinion. You know, we're in agreement that while this is a large stabilization fund relative to the size of our budget. Um, we also collectively believe that as a town, we're gonna need those funds in the not-too-distant future.
And, you know, it's wonderful to be in the position where we're not trying to get the increase of three percent down to two percent. You know, it's a question of whether a fairly flat tax bill is acceptable. And it might be the only bill I get in the year that isn't going up.
Anyway, those are our thoughts. What, what about the board? I mean, what, what are, what are your views on the free cash?
Oh, clearly, I think, I think what your recommendation is, is redline what the board was thinking. Hey, keep the tax bill as low as we can, improve with our savings for the future. As Dick said, we know we have projects to report. As Don said, we know we have expenses that are going up. And to have the ability to mitigate those. Against their taxpayers is a blessing we have. And then as Cliff said, we have free cash next year, we know we have. Three hundred already in the bank for next year because the state was a little slow on getting reimbursements back. So there is a little something next year that will offset perhaps some of the increases Don mentioned, which is good. It does show, bottom line, good fiscal management by people around the table, people in the town hall.
This free cash would have been over a million if the state had been providing with their payments on time.
Right.
So my only concerns are the property values have gone up so much and everybody's tax bills have increased substantially over the last year and year two. So I mean, people are looking for a break somewhere too, and then I think everybody understands that we need, we need to put money away for capital expenses that we know are obviously coming. But I think we need to offer some type of break to our residents too, because everybody's getting beat down.
Well. I, which functionally is zero increase is pretty much a break.
Yeah.
And I, I hesitate to say out loud. With the new valuations number, which again is.
Right, still two months.
How ridiculously low the tax rate could possibly be. Ridiculously low.
Because of the high valuations.
Because the valuations are going a ten percent to, to have. The tax rate go from eighteen something to say like sixteen something.
Dramatic, but then it's gotta come back afterwards.
No, that was not. Remember, valuation's going up does not. That's the thing that most taxpayers don't really understand. That the only way that your tax bill goes up in valuations is if your property goes up more than the other properties in town. That's what we, we got called last year because the residential went up more than the first property on promotion. And. We're just about a wash on the residential, if everything goes, goes as projected. Sadly, some of the commercials might actually save money.
Where are we with the levy limit? Um, well, well.
We used to assess earlier.
Record, a record.
In terms of capacity, capacity.
Yeah, we're gonna be, I would say it's gonna be more than a billion under the levy. That's what I'm saying, but we're getting, you know, we are flooded with some of this money. We got to save personal property gains every year. So. I'd rather be us than a couple of our neighbors.
Yeah, to, to your point, Craig, I mean, are you suggesting that we do something else with free cash?
I'm just putting ideas out there, you know, everybody seems to be having an idea about, you know, would it hurt to throw a little bit at the tax rate just to kind of see something?
And I'm not an expert at this. I think the amount of money that we have, we would have available to throw at it would be meaningless.
I mean.
The average thing, where we save money in the budget in the coming year.
Do we look at a split tax rate down, bro?
Well. That's a whole separate issue, right? The, but, but to your point. Um, by funding these articles out of free cash in, in essence.
Right, there's no expenditure.
What we're doing is giving the taxpayers, payers a rate. That money is not showing up. In, in the assessments.
Okay, had you done this as a reason appropriate.
Right.
You would have had to, to come up with the same result, you would have had to do at least. You know, a two hundred and forty thousand dollar reduced tax rate question. So you did that kind of by the back door, if you will.
Yeah.
Also, the state payment that was late has come in, so two hundred and seventy thousand.
That's already.
Which is a good start for free cash next year. And the last ARPA, last slug of ARPA money came in also.
Did better.
Really? Or, does that address your concerns, Craig?
It does, yeah. I mean, I understand that we're not, you know, raising the appropriate, so we're.
I mean, you know, we, we could, you know. Do the sleight of hand, you know, and say, oh, you know, we spent two hundred and forty thousand, but we're gonna apply two hundred and forty thousand free cash, so it's not gonna cost the town anything additional.
I've, I've just heard the phrase before that, you know, I, I like to maintain my finances rather than let the town put it into their big bank.
Um, and believe me, we use that phrase more than a few times. But piggy banks exist for a reason.
And we have two good reasons to.
You know, it makes sense, you know, you don't know where inflation's going, you don't know. Of course, they're going in. Oh, we do, yeah, that's true.
There.
We don't know how.
Anyway, that's, that's pretty much our. Hey, well, we're keeping you from your meeting. Do you want to take our chairs? What do you want to do?
Well, there's a big crowd.
Back to the crowd. What do you want to do? Well, we're gonna keep our meeting convened, which typically.
We will, we will, so we can keep this on.
Yeah, so you guys can be alive and camera. Yeah.
You know, there, I mean, once you want to sit here and just feel the power surge.
I hope we can handle it.
That's a lecture. Let's shore up the crowd.
It's got it right there.
He's got a middle one. Follow along. Okay.
Oceans are, I can project.
Okay. We won't be doing any motions tonight.
There, eleven thousand ninety-four.
Yeah. Before we be, well, let me. Are we all set?
I have a question for that.
Okay.
I have to take my notes.
Alright, alright.
Second job.
Yeah.
We did not, we do not have a quote yet from Sebula regarding the highway.
Alright, they're gonna open my question, so.
They, they have, they've been out there, they.
Alright.
Buy the service and.
We guys start off. Alright, uh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the uh. Public hearing, advisory's public hearing for the special town meeting, which will be occurring uh next Monday, October twenty-fourth. Uh, the purpose of tonight's uh hearing is to review the articles which are on a. Warrant for the special town meeting and to hear explanations and to receive public input. Uh, we'll take each um article in turn by asking the proponents of the articles to. Give an explanation. Um, just so everyone is aware, we are dealing with a uh free cash figure of six hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, the articles um. As written, and this is excluding Article One, which we do not get, have the figure for, but the articles. Uh, in total are two hundred thirty-eight thousand, three dollars and twenty-six cents. And again, that would be uh all free cash uh transfers. So with that, uh, let's begin with Article One, which is a security system for the highway garage. Um, this is uh. Is this for the entire building or for the portion, entire building? Okay, and uh, do, do you have an estimate yet?
We do not, and I asked this recently at four P M this afternoon.
Okay, so we, we don't even have a ballpark number?
Well, that's my question. The question that we, in two thousand nineteen, we, the town meeting appropriated. Three hundred thousand for the garage, then we could appropriate another three hundred thousand for six hundred thousand. And the bid came in at five hundred and sixty-two thousand. So that would, that's with us with, we added additional, well, I don't know, three alternative stars, came to five hundred sixty-two thousand, so. My math isn't that good, but it would seem it to be about thirty-eight thousand left over in that account. So I'm wondering if that could be used for a security system, because it's all part of the.
All part and parcel of the same structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the full thing. Mark is tracking the money there. With the cost increases, things like that, and using the alternates. I don't think there's thirty-eight thousand left in unused capacity, is there?
I wasn't there for that question. I didn't, I didn't get a balance.
Get a balance. Don brings up a good point.
I mean, if it's there.
Yeah.
I mean, that money's already raised in appropriate.
Yeah.
Alright, so can we have a, possibly have an answer for Monday? I know I'm asking a lot. Alright, so.
Otherwise, there will be no action on that article.
Alright, Article Two, clerical support for the highway superintendent. Um, I show a number here of eleven thousand and ninety-four dollars. Want to give a brief synopsis of, of this request? We're probably the only highway department in the local area. I know Marcus told me many times, he talks to superintendents in budding towns. That doesn't provide clerical help. And we have a department head who spends an enormous amount of time answering email, writing up. Things that really. We hire a talented man here to go out and monitor our, our infrastructure here. And he's tied down doing clerical work. And this is, I'd say maybe the growth of government, but it's the right growth. Because you don't pay the pharmacist to go out and sweep the, the, the grocery store floor, do you, Don?
See these hands? Do you see any calluses on them? Do you see any calluses on these?
Right, but again, this is, this is appropriate. The job has gotten big, there's no question. And with the paperwork involved, Data did it, probably till late at night. Mark's doing it late at night, it's not right. He needs, we pay him to go out and monitor the streets and run the crew and do those things.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, the, the question that came up in our discussions was whether or not this was appropriate. For a special town meeting, when this is really something that should be in the operating budget.
It's a good question, but I think we missed the opportunity. We've been talking about it for a while. It's, we're losing money. Right now, by having him doing this work and not doing the work, we're missing an email, we're not filing with the state. The paperwork to get the chapter nine, uh, chapter ninety back. Things aren't being done because we don't have this position.
But John, has, has this position been vetted through the process and we know where, where, you know, where it is in terms of the classification and all of that?
Yes, I, I did that, uh, and that's why we came up with the grade two. Took the responsibilities compared to the grade system that we have. I did not include steps because I had it originally, I had step one. But could happen that we would end up hiring someone who's already working here. Uh, part-time and for, for the twelve hours, and so that could be a different step. Which would change the eleven thousand number, but this is an appropriate, I think, grade two position.
Your point is a hundred percent right. It's unorthodox that we do it here at a special town meeting.
Yeah, it feels pretty out of the or, I mean, this is special town meeting supposed to be for unforeseen, more extraordinary. Um, items because it doesn't give, you know, the full body of the town, the ability to understand and weigh in, and it's part of the operating budget. We have to roll this in, so it, for me, it's, it's a timing issue. It's not about the merits of needing the position, it's really, is this the right time? Um, and in, in doing it, do we set a precedent for other, you know, kind of off-cycle roles to come on board?
Other things factored in, we had the stormwater issue where we talked about more. Responsibility being delegated to the highway superintendent. And he's, I can't handle much more, I really can't. But it's something, timing wise, it's going there now. Because of the expiration of the plan, the committee moving, stuff like that, so it's. It was tsunami, and we don't want it to wash Mark out.
Is, is there a physical space for, for clerical support, for administrative support?
Mark's gonna work out of his truck and the person's getting his office. Right, Mark? He's a team player.
We're gonna, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's a yes or a no.
We're working something, we're looking at a couple of different plans. Honestly, if that person, in my mind, if that person's a clerical person. In my mind, they. They should sit where Mark is. Access to the computer, the phone, the file cabinets. The little table where visitors would come, actually might be the superintendent's small desk or something like that, because again. Mark's going to enjoy being on the road instead of like buried under a mound of paperwork. Where I could just sell, tell that person, hey, get the ever source with this, get back to that, get back to that. I got to go see how that covert is coming. No, mobile. That's what it's going to be. Okay. Anybody have any further comments? Anybody want to apply? Article three, special act for a police officer over the age of sixty-five. Similar to what was done last year with the fire department, you know. At the sense that the population's aging. This is a, this is a no money article. And if I'm not mistaken, this is this is statutorily required. Right, it's a little ambiguity, I think Rose put in something there, so if the legislature wanted to change a little bit, it's in there. Okay, Article Four, increased funding for employee benefits. Understand that this was a result of essentially collectively, we. Undershot the. And a couple of retirements, where we have the sick time and vacation buybacks as well. I think Dick has come up with a number. That's barely, you've got the latest from. The Todd number, et cetera.
Now, this includes all three components. The two, the one full retirement, the one that's retirement. And the.
The number, the number that we're carrying is a hundred and sixty thousand. Which is a big number for us as a town, that's. You know, they these buyouts are getting. You know, as salaries increase, the buyouts are becoming more expensive. And we we've had some informal discussions over the years about. You know, doing something that will allow us. Essentially plan and fund for these, knowing that. You know, there are going to be a certain number of them. And it may, that time may have arrived because these these numbers are getting significant.
Have you guys done an analysis of, you know, what over the next few years, like when people are going to be retiring?
We need to do that because obviously the workforce is aging here, you know.
Scott, I mean, there's only certain people that get the buy offs, the contracted ones. Scott, I believe, has a list. He talks to his people over there, we know of. Kathy's returned, but she doesn't qualify for that type of bio. There's at least one I know in the next two years that's at a high number. In his department.
Right, because they're more highly compensated.
Right, in terms of the highway. After this person steps away, the rest of the people are fairly new in the department, you're. Average age of service, after Matt retires, you've done Lauren and. A couple of rookies, basically.
But it just would be a good idea to just to.
Right. Work on them.
The other thing is, I was a little concerned the last time is that we 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 kind of missed a few things, so is there a way with this time? Because we're going to do, you know, they're going to, people are going to get raises, the health insurance is going to go up, the. Is there a way we can make sure we got everything in there, the checklist, is there a?
It's the selectmen's number. You know, it's like one of the ones to provide that number. In the budget process.
So on this particular budget process, the last time we failed to put in. Medicare. We failed to. Yeah, okay, but we also did, but but that but that was, that came to three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And we only put three hundred and fifty thousand in. So we didn't adjust it properly, and then we needed another forty something, forty-eight thousand dollars for the Medicare payment. Forty-eight thousand. Yeah, 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 so we we didn't, we didn't include that. We didn't include the three thousand for the the stipends because the people were. Certified. And we didn't include something else. I'm just trying to figure out, we need to make our own checklist or whatever, so that we know that's all in there.
I I think it's fair to say, Don, that. You know. Given the experience this year, well, number one, we're fortunate in that we have the ability to to cover this.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, going forward, I mean, there's a lot of us that participate in the creation of these of these numbers and these budgets, and I think it's just a matter of all of us. Being more aware.
Yeah, like, like, I mean, I think any other, you know, like this time, we're going to have, we're going to pick up another five percent on the health insurance, plus whatever the. Health insurance class is going to be, so we just got to be aware of it and have some kind of.
It's incremental.
Yeah.
And and it adds up. But yes, I mean, we we frankly share that concern, and this is, this is a larger. Larger. Correction than we would like to see. Any any further comments, questions on? Article four. All right, Article Five, Government Study Committee.
Okay, this was, this was. I proposed this, and then the moderator thought you should go to the town meeting to see if the, for two reasons, number one, to get the town approval to do this. And number two, to get, see if there's people interested in in serving on it, and the basic thing is just to look at. Where we are in comparison to what other towns are doing, and also to look forward to when we have to replace some key people, how that should be done. And if there's any efficiency that we can gain from the study, and and the hope would be that they would come back with a report by the May. Twenty twenty-four town meeting.
Is this? An ad hoc committee, essentially, it's not statutory, there's no.
No, it's not statutory, no.
Many towns have government study committees.
Right.
But it's not statute.
Okay. No money. No money.
No money.
Any comments, questions?
The moderator, moderator that. You know, that should say, actually, it'll be pointed by the moderator. We didn't want the selectmen involved.
Yeah, I think if it goes in the motion, that covers it. Article Six, Additional Funding for Emergency Management. Going to put that off to Bob there, but we switched software packages back to Blackboard Connect or whatever it's called now. And the cost is more than what we're paying for Rave.
It was a one-time installation charge that. Was in the range of. Fifteen hundred dollars.
And and it's just the townwide. Yes.
This is the so-called robo-call, robo-call software. We used Rave.
Robocall has a very negative.
I know, yes, yeah. We were using Rave for a few years. Very unsatisfactory. And the town did use Blackboard Connect. Prior to prior to that, so we're going back to the. Package that we used in the past.
Is this, is the five thousand the install cost? Is the five thousand the install cost? Well, there was a installation cost plus. We had need for other emergency management, we have no equipment, no.
The installation cost is about fifteen hundred, this is for other.
Basically, we haven't, emergency management, we have the trailer, for instance, with, and it hasn't been reviewed in years.
And we had the, what, the border health revolving that got closed.
I'm just wondering if this is going to build into the operational budget or for, it's already in there and we're essentially. I think this is a one-time increase, next year is going to drop back down again. All right, any comments, questions? Okay. Article Seven, Additional Funding for Law and Claims. Showing a number. Money for lawyers. Showing a number of fifty thousand. To the lawyers or guns and. Number. We've been kicking around, we started thirty-five, fifty now, I brought to the board, do we think it should be sixty? Right now, we're at fifty. I've asked Bob to contact our legal firms and see what they have for outstanding invoices we haven't seen yet. And so we can project. Our sense, and you know, being mindful of the fact that none of us are involved in any of the of the ongoing cases, so we don't have any personal knowledge of these cases, but. But our sense was, given the the legal activity, that this number might be low. Given, and given that we do have the free cash, it may make sense to increase that a little bit. And if it's unexpended, then fine, it rolls into free cash the next cycle. I kicked around, well, I kicked around to the board sixty. Again, I think if we have. The recap, Bob is going to reach out to the different lawyers that we use. See what we don't have un-invoiced things projected as well. So, so how about, how about if we plan on. You bring in a new number to us next week at the at the public hearing. Well, we're trying to get it to before. I mean, we're not opposed to it, obviously, but. Also want to be realistic with the figure. Any comments? Sixty.
Sixty-five, down to forty-four at this point. We're down to forty-four of the sixty-five, and we don't yet know all the bills, we're all the bills, so we could have additional.
Right, so we spent, right, we spent twenty in July and August bills, and we haven't seen the September bills yet, so. You know. Totally early in the year. Right. To be trending that low. Or trending that high in the account usage. I don't think the board has an issue with sixty if it's prudent to do so.
No, we have the, we have the. Police, police grievances, we have the two planning board cases, we have the general. Stuff that we have to find out, the different boards have to find out. We have, we have the. The right-wing extremists. Asking for freedom of information request from the town clerk. Which ties her up, and she has to get things from the lawyers, which is nothing more than an attempt to. Undermine the democratic process of the country, but that's fine, it's their right. Not that I don't think we should have transparency in government.
I didn't really feel. Let me get you a soapbox.
Well, what I think, oh, I get my soapbox, I'll tell you what, this cuckoo pillow guy. Mike Lindell. That's put on a thing at his last truth session, that everyone should go to the town clerks and get the voting records. From the twenty-twenty, which they're doing, and it's tying up town clerks all across Massachusetts, all across the country. And at a time, at a time when, at a time when they're trying to get ready for a serious election. And that's the type of thing that undermines democracy.
Follower of that guy, but.
You know, so.
We have a request in for exactly that, comprehensive request for all town records.
For twenty-twenty, that means the copies of everyone's ballot, the copies of everyone's. Registration, the copy of everyone's.
Sixty may not be enough.
So.
All right, all right.
Other than that, I support, I support transparency in government. Kinda.
Sounds like transparency is getting more expensive.
All right, let's go on to the next thing.
I was going to say, are there any more comments or questions on Article Seven, but I'm not sure that I should. Article Eight, Additional Funding for Board of Health Expenses, showing a number of two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was because we closed out the border health revolving account, and I guess transfer station fund increases.
So these aren't really new expenses, it's just a different way of accounting for.
The only thing on that one, I would say is, seeing the selectmen as the board of health. Couldn't we take it out of the selectmen's expenses?
If you have it available.
Got ten thousand available.
Things, but, you know, I mean, that new chair you asked for is pretty nice.
In the luncheon, in the luncheons.
Yeah, right, but there are things that are appropriate, for instance, the revolving used to pay for the board health phone. Monthly phone charge, things like that.
It's going to be changing.
Yeah, so. So expenses are going up.
Well, there'll be some expenses at the transfer station going up for new testing that's coming up.
The Florida Health. Loaning Fund. Last year generated about forty thousand dollars in income. Which is now going to general fund income.
So I mean, it looks like we're spending two thousand more, when in fact, we're we're just processing the money differently. We'll take that deal any day. Yep.
Well, you know, eventually the grant money will run out on the board health agents, and we'll have to start paying that, but in the short term.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, let's see, Article Nine, Reimbursement for Minnetog Land Trust. Showing a number here of nine thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents. See, I show this is coming from the select board.
I have a question on that. The original estimate was five thousand dollars. And then they came over a bill with eleven, for eleven thousand dollars because of additional work, obviously needed to be done there. But, so that's, again, my math. Five from eleven is six, but now it's ten.
Just, just so that people are aware, Don, I'm not sure everybody's aware of what this. This is referencing, this is, this is for the parking area, for the the trailhead. For the land trust over on South Road. This was for for tree removal, for brush removal, and for stump grinding. And you're absolutely right, I mean, it started with a request for five thousand, which was approved at. And then the land trust. Ended up spending more for the tree removal than their their.
Authorized the overage after they knew that they were going to be over.
And it's their, it's their expense, it's their expense, yes, but they're coming to the town. With. With a position that essentially it's, it's a town asset. It's, you know, it's held by the land trust, but it is a town asset. And I think that's why the board supported it, especially with the trees and a public safety thing. Where I have the problem is now, as Don said, the number went up because they want to get rid of the stumps. And I don't see where the stumps have a public safety component to it. That's just aesthetics. You know, we got rid of the trees so they wouldn't fall and harm somebody, or we'd like to get rid of the stumps, well, we'd like to, but. I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but. I also look at what the land trust has done for the town, which is enormous, in my opinion, of enormous benefit to the town. And we all, we all benefit in lots of different ways from having, having these properties. I wouldn't for a minute suggest that the land trust is doing anything inappropriate. I mean, it's not all, this is purely, in my opinion, it's purely a question of judgment, I mean, is this an appropriate expenditure? And if so, is it appropriate that the town be asked to pay for it? I mean, that's the way I see this. The land trust itself, you know, receives no benefit whatsoever from these, from these funds. We now, they settle up the bills for the reimbursement number this week. My understanding is that, yes, the the land trust is is looking for reimbursement. No, it's good, I mean, that's good to know, they're not being penalized for a late payment, that would be. Anyway, it, you know, in my mind, it's it's not so much the dollar figure, it's more the, you know, the the process or the procedure. But I don't want for a minute for the, you know, the people in the land trust, you know, to be impugned because, you know, they're stellar people. They're not, you know, the only question I have was the stump thing to me was a little more. Not as critical. Right, as I say, I don't disagree, but I mean. I'm not sure that it's, it's the hill that we want to die on. There are so many. Anyway, I obviously have opinions on this as well. Any any comments or questions on this? Of course.
My question is, is that. Was there a spot where that was written? And then was that supposed to be moved? The stones and whatever, was that? Something that was done later and put it in that separate way?
That's a question that you'd have to put to them, I mean, they, the land trust dealt with the contractors, so I don't know what those. Negotiations or agreements were. Any, anything else? All right, that brings us to Article Ten, Reducing the Tax Rate. Was a popular article. Article Ten and Article Eleven, Transfers to the General Stabilization Account. If. You know, assuming that we go in a direction that we pretty much came to agreement on tonight. uh, we wouldn't be applying, you know, anything to the tax rate and would be transferring to this general stabilization, the balance of free cash, depending on what that, what that law and claims number turns out to be and what the, if anything, the security system ends up being. You know, we're, we're looking at a, a number in excess of four hundred thousand in the stabilization.
So would you want the motion there changed to, uh, move to pass over or take no action?
For the tax rate? I would assume it'd be a no action. And then, yeah, we'll fill in a number on the, the transfer notes. We know what the number is.
Okay, that's typically advisory committee's motion. Is the board supporting their recommendation with no actions for Article ten?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If that's how your vote comes out, we would support that if that's your.
We haven't voted our recommendations out.
Good, well, that brings us to the end of the warrant.
We could add some more.
We're good, thank you. Unless anybody has anything to add, we'll consider this public hearing finished.
Thank you.
No further questions? Public hearing's done. Thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before our board?
Yes, there is.
We have a permit for a temporary food service, uh, Broken Wolf Barbecue at Hand of Memorial Park, um, October twenty-third. Um, no, it's twenty seconds. It's the date. I don't know, first I've heard of it. So I don't, they must be doing some event down there. You know, they did want a food truck, and they were asking about getting a food truck. I wonder if the date's wrong.
Oh, baby.
Um.
I'll make a motion to authorize the broken barbecue for. From Memorial Park, the weekend of, uh, October.
Yes, this is, this is the twenty-third, which is a Sunday.
Okay.
Is it supposed to say twenty-second?
All right, I'll make a motion, authorize the barbecue for the weekend of October twenty-second.
Yeah, that's what it's twenty-second.
I noticed that the town offices have employee-only signs on their doors. Is that a safety issue? Is there some problem? It just sends the wrong message that.
Another group, there's a group that's harassing, sorry, there's a group that goes around the town offices to, let's say, instigate. But it could be that.
They, they, they run a video, they, they just taunt you and try to provoke you.
Yeah.
Then if you do, if they succeed and you get angry, that runs on Twitter.
I know, but I guess my point is, there's signs that say employees only. So here I am. Not Mr. Selectman, but, you know, Joe needs to find out about.
It's not in the town administrator's office, so they would funnel in.
And in the open part of the town clerk's part is too open, as well, right? The desk.
I don't know, I don't, I don't like it. So I just, going on the record to say that I don't like it. Well, because you know them, because you know them. But let's say I'm new into town. Let's say I'm.
Town offices, you're supposed to go in there for service.
You know? And I, and don't you think that that's an instigation right there for these groups to get there and see the signs of employees only to the selectmen's office or the, or the assessor's office or the?
I've been trying to stress that we need to be consistent with open meeting law requests or with public records requests. That everyone should follow the process. Uh, you could estimate the cost and give them, because if we make an allowance for someone that we know, the groups that come to provoke you will then say, did you do this for everybody? We need to make sure that we follow the law for everybody.
I mean, I think if one of these groups would come in and start trouble, you call the police department.
Exactly.
Part of the training, I think, you know, for the next staff.
You try to be very nice as you can be, smile. Most.
We'll bring you in for that.
You're smiling.
Yes. Inside.
Inside. Door's closed. I don't think so.
Well, the police couldn't find any.
Unverified.
Yeah.
Unfounded. The police said there's no, no issue when they got there. And we've, we haven't taken any formal complaints.
But put it in your files, so when they come in for renewal. You know, bring it up. And such, such date, residents. And it's probably like you said in the past, as we come out of summer, people aren't running the air conditioners anymore, so they hear that, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.